February 24th, and we have two items on the agenda. We have the development agreements on Vision Zero and Complete Streets. I will turn it over to the city manager.
Morning, Mayor, council members, general public. Thank you for attending this morning. Yes, two topics. The first of which with development agreements was a request by council in a previous discussion to bring this item back. I know Cody and his team in Development Services have spent a fair amount of time on this, doing the research. You'll see that in the presentation, and would appreciate any questions, and we'll get those answered at this point, and be done with this topic, hopefully. Cody?
All right. Mayor, members of council, good morning. I'm Cody Christensen, Development Services Director. I'm here to talk today about development agreements. I tell you what, walking in with the temperatures above freezing was a nice way to start this conversation, so I'm sure our construction industry is looking forward to having no snow or ice in their job sites here by the end of the week. This is a conversation that's been going on for a little over a year now. I want to provide a little background, though, before I get into it. Economic development agreements are the topic here today, and this is a tool the city has used for years to promote development in areas that have been targeted and identified as needing additional help to reduce blight, or for promoting development or redevelopment. Over the years, those agreements have had a number of requirements associated with them. Typically, those requirements are associated with the "what" is built. What we've been having discussions on over the last year is something new, a new concept that's more focused on how that product is built, and who is building it. Just wanted to talk a little bit about that today.
I have a preliminary question, just a point of clarification. I mean, we have tied, not just the "what" is built, but we've tied jobs. I mean, when we have development agreements with, I mean, the Kraus Center is a good example, we required a certain number of jobs be onsite after it's built, right?
Yep.
And we required a certain wage level for those jobs, right?
Yes, we certainly have.
Okay, so it's not always just about what is built?
I think in that case, we're talking about what's brought to the table. To me, that still falls into the category of what is produced. We're producing a structure, it's of a certain size, of a certain scale, built of certain materials, and with that structure comes a certain level of jobs, comes certain vibrancy to the area. So I still think that falls into the category of what.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and let's proceed forward, and let him get the presentation, and we can ask questions later.
So, yeah, anyway, like I said, we've had this conversation going on for a little over a year now, when our staff were asked to take a look at some more of the "what", or the "how" requirements. And over the course of the past year or so, our staff have had a number of conversations with developers, with those that we've been working on negotiations for development agreements. And this has really come to a head to bring it to this point in the discussion, when the agreement was approved for the 515 Walnut Tower, when we heard from a number of council members, as well as a number of members of the public, that we wanted to have more of a conversation, more of a policy-level conversation about these additional concepts. So since that meeting, staff has held a number of conversations with our local labor representatives, who have been coming to council meetings and raising these questions. So, what's on the agenda for today's conversation? Like I said, we went out and reached out to the labor reps, we visited their job sites, we had some nice tours of their training facilities, and we asked them a number of questions. We wanted to get a better understanding of what their concerns were, and what they're asking us to do. So the things that I'll be covering today, one, what are the problems that have been identified, and what are the additional requirements that we're being asked to administer? What tools already exist today that are available to address those problems? What are other cities doing, both in the Des Moines metro area, as well as in other parts of the state? What is currently required in Des Moines? Like I said, we've been doing these development agreements for quite a few years now, but I want to review what goes into our development agreements on the typical project. And finally, we're going to wrap things up with some additional considerations. We're talking about a policy discussion here, so I want to identify some things that'll be important to consider as a policy-level decision is being evaluated. I'll wrap up with the staff recommendations, and certainly welcome any questions, and absolutely any consensus on the policy direction that we need to go. Pardon me, I've been fighting a cold here for the last week or so. So the concerns that we've heard, like I said, we reached out to the local labor groups, we've had conversations with the carpenters' union, with the local 33, the plumbers and steam fitters, the ironworkers, and IBEW, the electricians. With all of these groups, we had two primary questions. What are the problems? We want to understand what the problems are that we're being asked to address, and what specifically are you asking that we do to address those problems? With all of the groups that we spoke with, we had a number of common themes, and those themes here are listed on this slide. One of the top concerns was unlicensed contractors. So the state of Iowa has contractor licensing requirements for all of the trades that build the construction projects that we have going on around town, all across the whole state, quite frankly. So any plumber, electrician, or mechanical contractor, the workers that they, the labors that they bring onsite, the state has requirements for certain levels of licensing that they have to be meeting. And the groups that we talked with had concerns that we're having contractors coming from out of state that are bringing in workers that don't hold those licenses. This is something that we actually check. This is something that's built into our process, our permitting and our inspection processes. When we're issuing the permits for those licensed trades, we're verifying that those contractors do have the appropriate contractor licenses. When our inspectors go out on the sites and do the inspections, they're asking the laborers that they interact with out there to see their licenses. They want to make sure that they do follow those state laws. And we're able to do that because the state code gives us that authority to do those A contractor registration is another topic. It's similar, in the sense that it's established at the state level, and its goal is to assure that the contractors that have employees are providing adequate levels of unemployment insurance and workers' compensation coverage. This covers a bigger pool. This is not just for the licensed contractors, but it's for any contractor that's working in the state of Iowa that has employees. That is also something that's checked at the time of permit issuance for those licensed trade contractors. As far as the enforcement goes on that, that's something that's handled by the State Department of Inspections, Appeals, and Licensing, better known as DILE, in short. They have programs for doing enforcement on the licenses, as well as the contractor registration, and they do investigations and lay out some penalties that we'll cover in future slides here. Another more common concern that we heard was associated with the misclassification of workers. Now, we've heard about concerns with payroll, workers being paid cash under the table, workers not being paid as hourly laborers, payroll taxes not being withheld appropriately. This is the category where all of those concerns fall into. The misclassification of workers is really when you have someone who's working as an hourly wage employee, but is being paid as a subcontractor. So that's, the alleged claim is that there's a lot of that going on, and that's just rampant across the state on construction projects. We've reached out to the state departments to do these investigations, so we're waiting on some additional data here that we'll talk about in the next slides. This is something that the city does not regulate. We're not in the business of doing the, identifying the classification of those employees. That's something that's done by our workforce development. With that said, if this stuff is happening, we do want to make sure that we're identifying what the problem is, to what extent. How much of this is happening in Des Moines? What is the issue? And what are the best ways for us to approach it? If the systems that are in place aren't currently adequate to address those issues, this is why we've engaged in this conversation, because we do care, we do want to see high-quality projects, and the quality of the projects gets into the next two categories. Unqualified contractors, like I said, we toured the training facilities for some of our local labor unions. They have some amazing training programs, nobody will argue that. They produce some excellent, some excellent workers that produce very high-quality projects. Now, they also recognize that there are other, non-union contractors out there that also have very high-quality training programs, that also produce very high-quality projects. The concern was that, in general, there are some contractors out there that don't, and they had concerns that those workers that aren't trained appropriately, that aren't worked through a good training program, aren't producing a product that's up to the minimum requirements. Now, I will say that we have a team of inspectors here in Des Moines that are probably the best in the entire state. We have staff that have come directly out of those trades, many of which hold master's licenses, they've proven that they are the experts in that field. And when they go out on these job sites, they can identify the work that's substandard, that isn't being done up to code, or by the people that haven't had sufficient training. And they're identifying that stuff during the inspection process. Now, with that said, we don't cover everything. When we talked with the ironworkers, they brought up concerns about uncertified welders that are doing welding on structural steel, and that then generated another conversation about our special inspections program. There's requirements that come with these projects, for the project engineer to identify those types of systems, that need to have an additional layer of inspection. And with those projects, we work with the general contractor and a third-party inspection agency, someone like Allender Butzke, or Terricon, or Construction Materials Testing. On many of these larger projects that have more complex systems, they are hired to have staff onsite, oftentimes throughout the entire day. They're out there watching every bit of concrete that's placed, they're looking at all of those welds, they're looking at all of the rebar, they're checking those things. It's a redundant mechanism. Where our inspectors aren't out there looking at it, there's others that are.
Why don't we get through this part?
Certainly welcome questions here. If I could get through this.
Why don't we get through this slide, and then you can ask some questions?
Now, with that conversation, we acknowledge that if things aren't being done well, if there's things that are being missed, bring those concerns to us. We want to have those conversations with the general contractors, with those special inspection entities. Or if our guys are missing something, we're certainly open to that conversation as well. We don't claim to be perfect, not by any means. We are in a state of continuous improvement, and that requires the engagement from those that do have concerns, who are willing to make adjustments as they're identified. So with that training, the unqualified contractors, we've had a lot of discussion about apprenticeship programs with council and with developers over the course of the past year. Like I said, when we were out on the site with everybody, we asked very specifically, what is it you want us to do? The carpenters' union gave us a very specific list of requirements that they were looking for. These were, this was language that has been implemented into development agreements in the eastern part of the state, and that was very nice, having a very specific list. What we didn't see is we didn't see any specific language pertaining to apprenticeship programs. I think that's more of a challenging item, to get a specific language wrapped around. Maybe that's why we haven't received that. But we did talk about it in general, just the general concern of unqualified contractors, and those systems that we have in place to address that. Now, the final concern that was a common theme across all of the discussions was just unsafe job sites. So, again, this goes into the proper training. With many training programs comes training on OSHA requirements, on how to make sure that workers are staying safe, reducing the number of injuries, reducing the risk. That's just a good thing for everyone to follow. And it turns out the state has its own division of OSHA inspectors that do go out and inspect these sorts of things. So this summarizes the concerns that have been raised. I guess I'll open up for questions on the concerns.
Did you have a question along down this?
Yeah, I have a couple. You said that you always had inspectors from the city that go out and visit with the workers. How many times does that happen? Because I've never, I've never heard anybody mention that that's being done.
Our inspectors are onsite every day of the week. There's inspections that are done every single day that we're open for business. I can't think of a single day that our inspectors have not been onsite inspecting projects.
Would that include, I have to think back to the MSC-2 building. I know that we had some concrete problems there, and they had to, like, tear out the concrete, I was told. I mean, that was a huge amount of concrete. If they were there every day, did they not see that, or what was the story on that? Do you know?
I don't have the details on what concrete issues there were on that project, but where I was going is where there's concrete, things like concrete or structural steel that the city inspectors aren't inspecting, there's a third-party entity that has inspectors that are specifically trained for inspecting that sort of work.
And who employs them? Is that the state?
No, so they're hired by the developer to be doing those inspections.
May I add a couple of comments? This might be helpful. Cody is correct. In fact, councilperson Gatto asked at our last meeting, what are all these expenses relating to construction administration? Inspections are one of those things, and it's the duty of the structural engineer and civil engineer on the project to identify what types of inspections have to happen. So every time concrete is poured, for example, there is a cylinder taken, or more than one of that concrete, that goes back to a lab, that lab tests the strength of the concrete, and if it fails the test, it's the contractor's responsibility to remove the concrete and replace it. And all of that monitoring is done at the expense of the developer, but the license of the individual engineers who are not employed by the developer, their license is on the line to make sure that those inspections happen. So it's not an expense to the city, but it is required. And regarding the city inspector, there are various stages of construction that require the city inspectors to go out. As an example, walls are constructed, and electrical wiring is put in place. Before drywall can be applied to those walls, the city inspector has to go out and inspect to make sure it's all installed correctly before it's buried, and that happens on a regular current. Sometimes developers are frustrated, you know, the contractor's waiting for the city inspector, they have to wait, they have to be inspected, so that does happen.
And I wasn't quite finished with a couple of my questions. When we talk about, I think back to Station 11, which was a city project, we had a whole bunch of problems there. How did we ever let it get that far then, if we had inspectors out there every single day?
So, city inspectors are not out on every single job site every single day. They are out in the field doing inspections on all the work that goes on.
When they called and said, okay, we've got the electrical income in, and inspect it. That's much different than having workers there that are there doing subpar work.
Yeah. So with the, I don't have the details on Station 11, I'd be happy to dig more into those, but what I can say is that it sounds like the issues were identified, and the contractors were required to make corrections to those issues. So it sounds like the process in its entirety is functioning. We're not getting 10 years down the road and discovering that there was something that was substandard that was done that was never caught. And so, yes, there are contractors, I'm not saying there's no contractors out there that don't do substandard work. What I'm saying is that we have systems in place that are designed to catch those problems and prevent them from being ongoing and being buried and not being discovered until years later, when that contractor is no longer around.
And maybe this is a little different than vertical projects, but Joe, remember when they did the roadwork out on East 21st and University? They did the work, and, I mean, the workers would show up Monday morning, they'd leave Friday to go back to Minnesota, and people's sewers backed up. I mean, it was a horrible nightmare for the people. Who was watching that? Why did we allow that if we have such strong inspections?
That might have been a WRA project, is what that was.
It could have been, but...
That's the one that Latin King had issues, and so I think they typically had an inspector that was trying to work on that project. That contractor isn't able to work for the WRA anymore, if I remember right.
But my point is, is that not everything is inspected. When he says everything is inspected, I just question that.
Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, Councilman Westgard is bringing up city public improvement projects, and so regarding Fire Station 11, Cody is absolutely right. We have a great finished product. The things were caught, yes, there's not someone, say, for example, one of the issues was the tile in the bathroom, the different levels of tile weren't put at the right relief, okay? We don't, yes, we didn't have someone standing there 24/7, watching the person put every piece of tile in, but we caught it at an early stage, and they had to redo it. The windows, for example, also got installed without some proper sealing. Yes, we didn't watch every single window get put in, we're not standing there behind the contractor, so yes, they installed some incorrectly. However, we made them fix it and redo those windows. And so during critical components, they are there. So, for example, when there are actual certain connections made for plumbing inspections, the team is there. But in terms of, like, yeah, will stuff get installed incorrectly and they have to redo the work? Yes, there was work that had to be redone.
But if we had allowed verbiage into that development contract saying, you have to hire tradespeople that are qualified, wouldn't that have prevented some of that?
So, Mayor, Council, if I could, just real quick, we need to stay focused. We can bring back questions about our own city projects, that needs to be a separate conversation. This is about private work with economic development agreements, and by the way, there are all kinds of legal reasons why we can't do where you were headed with our own projects. We will bring that back as a separate topic, but we're way off track at this point.
And I was just equating...
But we've also corrected paths. I mean, we are now using construction manager at risk, which wasn't allowed before for our city projects. So for the three building projects now are being done with construction manager at risk, where we are selecting that construction manager in accordance with state law by qualification-based selection, not by the method that we're done before, so...
Let me give an example along Linda's line of questioning that I think illustrates the type of impact, because, yes, I think these things get caught, but oftentimes late. So, for example, right now, there's a project that we have development dollars in on University that there has been scaffolding on for a significant amount of time, because the developers fighting with the subcontractor over work that was done wrong, and who has to pay to fix it. So that, I think, to your point, Linda...
I just bring up the comparison, I mean, those we know about.
Those type of things do happen and do create a consequence. I mean, that project has struggled to get leased up, and that project has, you know, it's, I mean, the fact that there was scaffolding on it well after completion, because there's this fight between the developer and the subcontractor over a mistake in the way that the work was done.
I appreciate that, but I think we're going to hold questions so we can get through this presentation.
I just, I have a real quick, just about OSHA. Is that only complaint-based, or are they visiting job sites to look at safety concerns throughout the region? Or is it only if someone calls about a safety issue?
They do both. They do proactive inspections, as well as responses to complaints.
And I think it's well noted that, like, last year, I had a conversation with the word "responsible, responsive bidder" with some Republican leadership at the Capitol, and they immediately said to me, if you do, if you want us, that's why you have the construction manager at risk. That's why they, that's why you have that option. So if you want us to go in and preempt everything, go ahead and start bringing that up and do individual things. And I've shared that with everyone probably sitting in this room, and so I think that's well noted, that we're working against not only the entire region, because we would be the only one, but we're also working against them up there, and they're watching every single move that we do, so they can do whatever they want to do. So they think they solved the responsible, responsive bidder. I don't believe that it's identified or agree with them, but that's what we're fighting right now. And so I'll let you finish your presentation.
I'm going to ask all of us, put your questions down, hold your comments, we're going to let Cody get through, because we'll never get through today with the two items that we have, and then we can go back around, so save your questions and your comments.
Very well. We will have time at the end for questions and other discussion. And so councilmember Gatto's comments are a good segue into the next slide here. I realize I should have specified that there's really two separate conversations, and City Manager Sanders kind of pointed this out. And we're talking about the responsible bidders and defining those responsible bidders, and that was something else that we heard in our conversations with the local labor reps. And we did make it pretty clear with them that that's Steve and his team's bailiwick, and that's also something that's regulated at the state level. What we were out there to talk with them about, and what I'm here to talk about today, is the economic development agreements, which are those agreements with private developers that are awarding contracts that are not going through a public bidding process. So I think we're on the same page now, but I'll move forward. This slide is identifying some of the tools that exist out there today to address these concerns, and I may be jumping ahead a little bit here, but councilmember Gatto kind of brought up a good point. If we are saying that we don't think that the systems that are in place at the state level are good enough, and we need to layer additional regulations on top of those because we don't think they're good enough, I think there's a legislative risk that should be considered. And I'll add that in now, because this is the point in time where I'm going to point out the stuff that is done at the state level. So after hearing from the labor representatives and the concerns, getting a better idea of what they viewed as being the problem, then the next step was to identify what tools are available, what exists out there today to address that problem. We don't want to let problems go. We want to make sure that we do have high-quality projects that are built in the city of Des Moines, really across the entire metro and across the entire state. So we reached out to the Department of Inspections, Appeals, and Licensing. They're at the state level. They administer the licensing and the contract registration programs. They have auditors, they have investigators that do respond to complaints. When we talked to the Contractor Registration Bureau, they talked, like, the number of complaints they get on the average year really isn't that many. And to back up, the contract registration, that's what everyone who has employees, every contractor that has employees, has to register. That's to assure that they have adequate unemployment coverage, workers' compensation coverage. That's what really gets into protecting the workers that are out there. They did say that they do have some pretty significant fines, $500 fine for the first violation, $5,000 fines for subsequent violations, but what really surprised me was the low number of complaints that they had received about unregistered contractors. It said 50 to 75 on the average year. Now, they did say that after things like the derecho, where we have a swarm of out-of-state contractors that are coming in to do a bunch of roofs and siding and a bunch of work, they said at those points in time, the complaints go through the roof. So I think there's a lot of other things that are going on at that point, because the state is more susceptible to fraud. Iowa DILE also does, they implement the OSHA inspections program. I won't get into the details on this thing, because we can go down a pretty deep rabbit hole there, but the takeaway is that the state does have inspections, they do have ways to report those, to report the violations or suspected violations. And on the left-hand side of the screen is a number of links. I'm not sure if that made it through in the PDF that's available online, but the second one should read "contractor registration," messed up, and I entered "license" there. But the second one should read contractor registration, messed up and entered license there. But here's some tools to check to see if your contractor is licensed, check to see if your contractor is registered with the state, and also a number of forms that can be used to submit complaints. This this is not. This is on our presentation. We can put it on our.
Is that located on the state website?
Mm-hmm. Yep, yep. We can add it to our website as well. And like I say, we're 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 absolutely happy to help address concerns that are out there. We're happy to help to work with the entities that are already set up and staffed to do these sorts of investigations and audits. So I wanted to put these, put these these resources out there so everybody's aware that they're that they exist. The other, the other big concern was worker misclassification. That's the hourly laborers that are actually being paid as subcontractors. Iowa Workforce Development regulates that. And so I talked about identifying the problem, you know, as we're looking at making policy decisions, it's good to identify what the problem is, but it's also good to have data that reflects what that problem is. And right now, we don't have that data. So that's part of the reason that we reached out to these state entities. They they have, they have programs that do the enforcement. They they take complaints. They take anonymous complaints. So we're being, we're hearing that this is a rampant issue. I'm hoping that the number of complaints reflect that there's a concern of a rampant issue. Iowa Workforce Development is committed to give us those numbers this week on the numbers of complaints that they've received for misclassified workers. Should I should have those numbers this week? That's another piece that goes into this policy evaluation. As we're making decisions at the, in regarding to city policy, I want to make sure that we have the data there so we can make database decisions and not just react to conjecture or or opinions. I'd like to see some more, some more information about it. But anyway, Iowa Workforce Development, they have a team of auditors. They have, they have links online where you can submit, submit concerns, submit complaints, and then they'll go out and do the investigations. They'll go out and talk to those workers to see if they're, if they actually should be classified as an hourly laborer or if they're appropriately classified as a as a subcontractor. And at the bottom of this page, again, I just want to hit on the stuff that the city that the city does. We verify the the licensing and the registration. Our inspectors, when they're on site, they're checking for licenses. We've had projects where we've had a number of workers come in, say, electricians, that are doing some work that's really subpar. And it turns out the guys start asking for licenses and the workers that are on site don't have the appropriate license. So at that point, they send them home. If they can't get compliance through sending those contractors home, the job, the job site is shut down. And that's a real eye-opener, and that gets things resolved very quickly.
Are we made aware of that if if we're in a development agreement with 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 these job sites? Are we made, are you made aware of that? And then in turn, is the the council? I've never received anything saying, yeah, we've we've noticed this. This job site's been shut down.
It's it's been a while since we've had to shut down a job site because of that. But usually, the way that we're made aware of it is our inspectors are notified by other contractors, others that that aren't working on that job site or others that are working on that job site in a different trade that recognize that there's something funny going on, that things aren't being done well.
Which is, that's the best way to catch any type of violations is is what you just said.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So then are you made aware of that as when the complaint is done, you go out there, they don't fix it?
Yep, yep. And then we also work with with Iowa Dial too. So Department of Inspections, Appeals and Licensing, those, the entity that really enforces the the state licensing program, we make them aware of those licensing violations as well. So it's not just us. It's a two-pronged, it's a two-pronged approach.
Cody, it might be helpful to know, when you talk about inspectors, how many inspectors there are? For example, if if just two, if there are just two OSHA inspectors for the entire state, that's not a lot, but.
Yeah, so.
To me, that doesn't feel like a lot, but.
Yep, no, that's noted. And you see the the link there right above the the white, the white text at the bottom on the left. It says locate the unemployment insurance field auditor in your area. That's with Iowa Workforce Development. That will take you to a spreadsheet that lists all of the auditors. They're implied but employed by Workforce Development. And there's about a dozen of them, I believe, but they're broken out by by each portion of the state, each city and county. So if you have concerns of something going on in any area, you can go to that, go to that sheet and identify the auditor if you want, if you want to talk to that person individually.
Is it an immediate inspection? Is it weeks? Is it months? What have you seen?
That's that's what I'm waiting to get back from Iowa Workforce Development. So anyway, and then final, final point on this slide is, like I've been, I've been mentioning, our city inspectors are out there to look for the, look for the substandard work, to identify the the people that probably haven't been trained appropriately. And then when our inspectors aren't out there, we have third-party inspectors that are a backup measure to help cover that stuff.
Whether it's, whether it's development agreements, if they, if it's a nonprofit that's taking money. I mean, it's for any.
Yes. It's it's a consistent application across the board regardless of what type of project it is.
I'll hold that question then because I do have something to add on that.
This this slide covers, this is just an example of a couple of those workforce development online complaint verification forms, or you can submit your complaints here. The one on the left is a misclassification. And then the one on the right is specific to unemployment or employer fraud. So these are out there for anybody. Anybody can submit complaints when they have concerns about the stuff going on on projects. So we've, we've really dug into what what problems have been identified. We've covered some of the stuff that exists today. And I also want to talk about what other communities are doing for their development agreements. Like I said, the carpenters union provided us some pretty specific language. And they mentioned that it had been, it had been adopted and employed in Cedar Rapids. So our team reached out to, we talked with Cedar Rapids and some of the eastern Iowa communities. And yes, it's, it's, that's true. In eastern Iowa, there has been additional language that's been added to their economic development agreements. There was a a project where there was a a concern of an underage worker working out there on site. And that generated a media reaction and and a priority for addressing that in that eastern Iowa region. So the response was that those development agreements now require compliance with all local, state, federal codes and laws and regulations. They require unemployment insurance and workers' compensation coverage. And they go to the extent of requiring those proof of that coverage to be provided upon request by the city. They also require lists of all subcontractors to be provided upon request. And they require the developer to notify all contractors and subcontractors that the city may request verifiable payroll records that wouldn't include the social security numbers of employees.
Seems like they've, they've got to follow the law anyway. We're not asking, they're not, we're not asking them to do anything that's not already required. We're just holding their feet to the fire and saying, we may ask you for that. Why would that be so difficult for us to put into our development agreement?
I'm going to get into this when we get to the, when we get to the concern slide. But in in comparison, the right-hand side side of this slide shows the Des Moines metro area. So in eastern Iowa, we have Cedar Rapids, which is pretty much on its own. It's it's out separated from from its nearest competitors, Coralville and Iowa City. There's substantial different distance there, similar to the distance between Des Moines and Ames, for example. Now, in the Des Moines metro area, we're in a different environment. We have communities that on all of our borders that we compete with for development. And what we found as we reached out to our neighbors to see what they put in their economic development agreements is they have some, the general requirement to comply with all local, state, federal laws and regulations. They have not added this additional language that requires the reporting mechanisms. Now, I would argue that the unemployment insurance, the workers' compensation coverage, that that is a state, that is a state requirement. So the general, the general requirement that you comply with all of these rules and regulations covers all of those. In eastern Iowa, they've been more explicit in identifying it. In the Des Moines metro region, that's not the case. It's more of a general, just a general statement. So, like I say, we've been talking about this for a little over a year now. And our staff have been working, talking with developers about a number of items that have been requested by council members since late 2023. And we have added some things to our development agreements. I'm going to cover those on the next slide. But before I get there, I want to cover just some of the basics, some of the, some of the foundation of our tax increment financing and how we use economic development agreements. To start out with, just the the fundamental principle, the purpose of these is to reduce blight. It gives the city a tool, the state has given cities this tool, that we can use to reduce blight or promote development redevelopment in areas that the city has identified as needing some additional attention. The way that we administer it is when we're dealing with a developer that's working on a project that has a financing gap, this is a tool that we can use to help cover that gap. The idea is that without that incentive, that project doesn't happen or that level of project doesn't happen. The way that we administer this, we typically don't hand out a check upfront. There's risk that comes with that. What we're talking about is we're talking about an incentive that is that is divvied out at the end of the project, when the project is complete, after that tax increment has been generated and that funding source is there. So we're not taking on the risk of writing a check upfront. This is something that, that risk is something that the developer is taking on. The developer takes on that risk of going out and securing all the financing, all of the funding, and has to complete that project before they're even eligible to receive any incentives. This, this is the typical, the typical approach for most, most development agreements. We do have oversight. So any economic development agreement recommendation that exceeds 75% of the project-generated TIF or exceeds 15 years needs to go before the city's debt review committee. That's composed of our finance, members of our finance department and city manager's office. And our economic development team is presenting them with these, with these proposals. And they're giving it, they're giving it a thorough analysis on what the impacts are, what level of risk we take, how this impacts our, how this impacts the city's financing. We also shoot for TIF assistance to not exceed 15% of the total financing stack for the project. We don't want to be, we don't want to be the major funder of any project. We'd rather have a small portion of that. In fact, we prefer to be 10% or less. So we're in it for a a small portion of the overall financing. And finally, for any developer to be to be eligible, they can't be in breach of any of any contract, can't be delinquent of any debts, and they certainly need to be paid up on their property taxes. So these are some of the the foundational components of how we go about administering these development agreements. Now, on to the nuts and bolts. What what does go into our development agreements? What are we pushing for as we're negotiating with with developers? Now, like I said, this conversation's been going on for a little over a year. The initial request for apprenticeship language or or payroll records came up in late 2023. And staff did engage in conversations with developers on this, some that were in active negotiations, some that had already had their preliminary terms approved. This came up mid midpoint, midstream. What we found, we'll talk about here on the next slide, but I just want to make the point that this has been discussed with with the developers. And when we bring a a final terms to council for that final vote, it's because we've reached a point, we've reached a a list, a set of items that the developer is actually willing to, willing to administer. You'll never see a development agreement that the developer's not willing to sign. It'd be a waste of time. So the things that do go into our development agreements, we do have provisions that require compliance with all federal, state, local laws, regulations, and we do specify workplace safety. We also have requirements for all the workers that are required to have unemployment insurance to have it. And for those that are required to be provided with workers' compensation coverage, to be provided with that coverage. We don't go on to ask that it be verified, that we be provided with the proof of that. Quite frankly, we're not the, we're not the team that's that should be evaluating that, whether, whether or not it's adequate. That's what the state, that's what the state does. We also have a list of of sustainability and energy efficiency requirements that we that we push for. Affordability, we've had a lot of conversations about 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 affordable housing recently. And with all of our incentive, with all of our incentivized projects that are providing residential units, we we hold that developer to provide at least 10% of those units at 65% home rent limits. So the goal is to have affordable housing integrated within that, within that market rate stock. Many of our projects go far above and beyond 10%. Those are oftentimes using other, other financing sources, such as low-income housing tax credits or workforce housing tax credits, and that really boosts the the affordability aspects of what we, what we push for in economic development. We also require new commercial construction projects to participate in Mid-American Energy's new commercial construction program. This has the developer and the developer's design team working with Mid-American Energy to look at the design of the project, identify areas that can be improved to increase that that project's energy efficiency. This is a very popular program, especially with those developers that plan to hold those projects for decades because in the long run, they have a, they have a payoff. It's benefit, it's financially beneficial to them as well as being good for the environment. We push for electric vehicle charging stations. They're simply required whenever any off-street parking is provided. And we see that on all of our projects that come through that have off-street parking. We have both the EV charging stations and the additional conduit for expansion of that, of that infrastructure as it becomes more popular. Our residential projects are urged to utilize all electric designs with heat pump, heating and cooling technology for those residential units. That's very common in in our development agreements. And we also have conversations with the developers and their design teams about exceeding the applicable energy codes and exceeding the sustainability requirements. We have projects like Star Lofts that have gone above and beyond. We didn't, we don't have an economic development agreement for that project, but our team had extensive discussions with those developers. We also talk about compliance with with more recent additions of the Energy Conservation Code and the installation of renewable energy systems such as rooftop PV. You can see an example of that on 28th Street, 51528, I believe the project is. And finally, participation in DART's Unlimited Access Partner Program. Now, we see this with both the residential projects as well as the projects that have workers being on site and on DART routes. The reason that I bring up all of these points is because I want, I want to point out that we are doing a lot. We're adding a lot of, a lot of stuff in these negotiations. And with each piece of this, oftentimes comes an additional cost. Now, remember, when we're having conversations with developers, it's because there's a financing gap that they're looking to close when they come and talk to us. When they come and talk to us and ask us for assistance, it's because they can't get enough financing to make that project happen. So we're happy to help them with that. But as we're having those conversations, we're adding them, we're adding on additional stuff. We're saying, you know what? For the city to to commit to this, we do need to see some other things. But I just, it's important to realize that with all of those extra items comes additional cost. And as we start considering further policies, that's important to make sure that we're considering what additional costs come with those, those policy implications. So we're getting close to the end here. Bear with me. Things to consider. Like, like I've been saying, we've, we've had conversations with developers. And as we brought forward concepts like apprenticeship requirements. we brought forward concepts like apprenticeship requirements, payroll, submitting payroll, submitting lists of subcontractors, submitting the, the proof of unemployment and workers' compensation coverage, there's, there's additional administrative costs that come with every one of those things. The administrative costs, we've been told, may increase the project by three, project price by 3%. If we're talking about a hundred million dollar project, you're looking at an extra $3 million there, just for reporting requirements that may be requested. We've also talked to developers who have built projects in areas that have had apprenticeship requirements as, as part of the program, and they've indicated those project costs are oftentimes 20 to 25% higher than the costs of building projects in Iowa. So these, this is what we've heard from the development community. Along with that, along with the developers, we've also talked with the lenders, because without the lenders, the developers can't make these projects happen. The lenders have also raised concerns with adding requirements to development agreements that would cause a breach of contract with something that couldn't be rectified. And the lenders have indicated that there's a good chance that they just won't participate in lending in projects if they have certain levels of risk that are added to the, to these agreements. So those are some of the most significant concerns that I want to point out for, for council to consider. On this slide, if you look at the, look at the left-hand side, these, this is a, this is a reflection of what happened in the Des Moines area in 2024. So, $2.34 billion worth of commercial construction projects, that's the total for the Des Moines metro area that was permitted in 2024. So just the permits that were issued, nearly $2.5 billion worth of development.
Are you, you're, you're including?
All of our neighbors, all of our neighbors, yep. Because that's, that's our environment. That's, that's, this includes everybody that Des Moines is competing with for these projects. So, over $2 billion worth of permitted development projects. And as we're looking at how to address a concern, how to address problems, we're being asked to add additional requirements to our development agreements. In 2024, we issued permits for $130 million worth of incentivized projects in Des Moines. So the blue sliver of that pie chart up there, that's the number of projects that would have been affected in Des Moines if we were to have implemented these, these systems last year. 5.5% of the overall construction industry.
Let's go through staff, we've got one more slide.
So, I've got a little bit out of order here. But the last item on this slide is that, like I've talked, the, the state code gives state entities the authority to implement and enforce things like payroll audits, to enforce the, the classification, the classification requirements for workers. When it comes to, when it comes to withholding and taxes, that's even something that's a concern at the federal level. Now, staff have concerns with layering additional resources on the city. One, we're, we're just not staffed to do this level of review, this level of audit and investigation. And two, I'm not sure that we're the right entities to be doing that. So, the staff recommendation, this is the last one, and we'll open it up for questions and, and discussion. We, we recommend continuing to use our current development agreement language. Over the course of the past year, we have, we have added some provisions that cover workplace safety, unemployment insurance, workers' compensation coverage, compliance with all federal, state, and local laws. That, that's in there, and that is an expectation. We recommend utilizing the systems that are already in place to make sure that compliance is achieved. We, we do a substantial amount of work through our permitting inspection processes to assure that licensing and the quality of work is there. The state has a number of programs for job site safety and for addressing that misclassification of workers. So we recommend allowing them, the state, the federal program, to do those investigations, to make those determinations that somebody's not, not compliant. Because quite frankly, the city staff are not the ones that should be determining if a worker is classified appropriately. That's, that's not what we do. That's not in our wheelhouse. Let's utilize our inspectors, both in-house and the third party. And if council decides, this is a council decision, and this is a policy-level discussion. So if, with the information that we provide, if council decides that additional action is needed, our recommendation is that if there's, if this problem needs to be addressed more aggressively, that it be approached at the state level, where there are the programs already established to regulate licensure, training requirements, workplace safety, the proper classification, payroll. And if that can't be done, but the council still wishes to pursue something, we recommend that it be done on the smallest scale at the regional level, because of the concerns with competitiveness issues. And I'll throw out an example. Years ago, Des Moines had more restrictive construction codes than the rest of the metro area. And that's kind of the direction that we're headed right now, right? Add more, add more regulation to your development agreements. But we, we had done this before with construction, with construction codes. And the reaction from the industry was that this was a problem. Developers would go from Des Moines to West Des Moines to Urbandale to Ankeny, name a suburb, and the set of requirements was different. And the pushback got to the point to where Capitol Crossroads said, you know what, cities? Here's an option. Let's, let's try and work on getting, getting more consistency. So through the Capitol Crossroads, the Central Iowa Code Consortium was established. Now, this had, this came from the, the group of cities in the metro area, I think the MAC Group supported this. And through that, through those conversations, they said, you know what, this is a priority. Let's, let's, let's do a regional approach to improving this consistency. And so we had industry, we had, we had building code representatives, we had fire code representatives, we had city manager's office representatives, all participate in this, in this exercise to increase the consistency. And though we all still have our, 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 our one-offs, we still have some unique amendment, code amendments. I'd say the work that was accomplished through that did promote, it resulted in a much more consistent construction environment across the entire metro area, that I think you would find the industry says was beneficial. Those were good steps to take. So if, if additional action is needed, that would be my recommendation, is that, that be the, the way that it's pursued.
I've got one question from the slide before. So you say 5.5% of the, how much, how much incentive did we give, like, non-generated TIF out of that? Because that, that's where I see possibly a solution to where if we decided to make a policy change, I think that we could do, you know, a non-generated TIF. Obviously, that would affect our general fund, but, you know, that, that, that is really the only way that I see that we're able to even accomplish something like this. But how many of these have that non-generated TIF?
Very few, very few. The, the non-project-generated TIF is not used frequently.
Yeah, I know.
And think of maybe our, some of our projects along Sixth Avenue that have utilized non-project-generated TIF.
Well, Councilmember Gatto, can I ask a follow-up question to, I mean, I'm curious.
That's all the questions.
I mean, this, this is more to you, because my understanding is that we don't use the full TIF amount on most of our projects. I mean, by policy, we're trying to avoid that, right? So we're not, I mean, there's still a pretty, on most projects, a pretty big gap between where, what our incentive level is and just being to the full TIF amount. So before you even need to go above and beyond, I mean, we have some room. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we don't do 20-year, 100% TIF on many projects.
Right. And I, I was just curious, on, on this particular chart for 2024, the tower in 515 isn't included in this, is it?
That permit wasn't issued until 2025.
Okay, so that, that's not, and do you know, I mean, how much of this, this is all commercial, is what you're saying?
Yep. Yeah, that doesn't include the single-family residential.
Do you know how much of this is a data center in, in some of the, one or two very large projects?
There'd be a significant amount of data center projects in West Des Moines. What I can say is, Des Moines' portion of that 2.34 billion was about 600 million, 600 or so million, million.
About a quarter.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And the data center, as Davis Bank and Wages attach to it, do they get federal funded for that?
I, I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
What, I, I just have a comment. I look at this, I think the code, I think that we made some adjustments to the code, which is fine. But to me, what I see as the issue is that we have developers that are not following what the state and the local laws are saying about hiring processes. And I don't see how it adds the cost of a project to just say, you have to do what the law says, you have to, you have to have verifiable payroll. I don't, I don't understand why we keep saying that that's going to add so much cost to a project when they're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Could, could, could I ask questions along that?
Yes, please do.
I mean, so, any construction company or, and contractors, they're going to have a payroll system, right?
Certainly.
And, I mean, they're, they're going to be collecting this information as part of the ordinary course of their business, right? Unless they're paying someone under the table today, they've got a payroll system, they're recording this in some manner.
Yeah, so in our conversations with the developers, the, the concerns were with the additional costs for the, for the reporting of that. So to produce the list of payroll records, produce all of the, all of the employees, strike out their, their, their social security numbers, hand that off to the general contractor to then hand it be off to the city, that's what was identified as adding additional administrative costs onto those projects.
And they think that, that alone would be 3% to, to do something like that. They're estimating that just printing off their list that might have a, a software program component to it that could, I, I mean, I don't, I don't think you would, I mean, the social security would be in its own probably column in a payroll system, right? So, so the idea that someone would manually redact that, they're saying that piece is 3%.
Yes.
That, that's the feedback.
The reporting, yeah.
And to provide a list of subcontractors, like they're saying that that piece, I mean, how many subcontractors are there on a typical project?
Dozens.
Dozens, so 20, 30, 40, I mean, but you're talking, there'd be, and, and any general contractor's going to be managing all those subcontractors, right? I mean, they're going to know how many subcontractors there are on a project. And, I mean, I'm hard-pressed to see how there's any cost to share just a list of subcontractors, right? I mean, that's one of the things that we're asking about. Just a list of subcontractors. That, that's not, like, just adding that to our development agreement, provide a list of subcontractors. How is there any cost to that?
I, I think that's a fair question, Councilmember Mandelbaum. And the feedback that we've received from the developers is, when we hit them up on these requirements, their response is along the lines of, well, this is obviously being asked from someone who has never managed a construction project. And that, that may sound like a knee-jerk reaction, but when a developer is telling their contractors, as they're going out to the bidding process, they say, hey, we're building this project, and here's what we want you to build, here's the specs that we want you to build it to. That's typical. When they go on and say, oh, and by the way, we also need you to provide us a list of all of your subcontractors that you might be, that you might be employing. We also need you to provide a list of all of your payroll records at any point the city is interested. They're saying, well, that's going to add cost. That increases the bids. The risk of that additional administrative work impacts the bid. Now, whether it costs anything, or actually costs anything or not, who knows? That question is yet to be, yet to be answered. But what we do know is that it does increase that bid price as it's coming through because of the additional risk that those contractors perceive that generating.
Does anybody have, do you have a question? Chris has not asked, and I will let him.
I'm, I'm interested in the, the Central Iowa Code Consortium. Are you guys still active? Is there, is there still meetings? Do you talk about industry shifts or anything?
So the group, the group comes together, comes together every three years, and, because the new code cycle comes out every three years. The last time that group got together, it was interesting, because the first couple of rounds took a lot of work, took a lot and a lot of work, a lot of, a lot of time commitment from city staff, a lot of time commitment from the industry. But what we found is that after a couple of rounds of that, everybody was pretty much in line. Everybody got to the point, all the cities in the area got to the point where, okay, every three years now we just kind of move forward all at once. So after that initial work, there was less, less commitment needed. Now, I do anticipate it will continue, but to the level of effort that's, that's required for it to continue, I see that reducing.
I, just, just as a follow-up, and this is more for my colleagues, after we had a couple of speakers and got some emails, I, I wrote Andy and a couple of others, because I'm involved in MAC as chair, I asked them to come to a meeting when the legislative committee ended. MAC is the regional. So hopefully, they will be on an agenda where we can have some of that policymaker discussion. But I, I guess I'd also like to know that the Code Consortium, you know, the professionals that are, that are grappling with this are, are also convening a little bit, just as the marketplace changes a little bit, and we have an environment where, where, where people have concerns. I, I appreciate all the questions, but I'm, I'm probably most concerned about the employee versus subcontractor, because I, I see that affecting a lot of, I, I see it affecting a lot of complaints and issues in my, my other job, too. And I, I think that's true of, you know, putting a sidewalk in front of a residential house to building a 30-story skyscraper, I think. So I'd love to know what are incremental things the Code Consortium would be thoughtful about proposing to its city policymakers.
So, the, the Code Consortium is made up of the practitioners that administer the, the construction codes, the building codes, the fire codes, plumbing, electrical, mechanical codes. I think this, if, if the intent is for another conversation about, about economic development agreements, I think that's a different group that's, that's involved and engaged in that The, the, the economic development directors in the area, for example, would be part of that conversation. I think the city managers and, and mayors in the area would be, would be interested in what the region would be interested in doing.
And, and that's what I think MAC can do. I just, from the technicians and the people that are really dealing with the contractors, as, as we approve projects and working on them, I'd continue to like to know, I, I can see where there are concerns.
Oh, sure. So I, I do.
And I, I have those concerns. I'd also want our fix to not just address concerns, but the real issues that we're having. What, what, what is, what are the founded issues, not just, not just concerns?
Yeah, and I, I do think, I do think the, the Code Consortium would have staff that could participate in conversations there about thing like, things like unlicensed contractors, the, the approach to how we address those, those reactions, those complaints that are received.
My, my, my other question, Ted, was, I'm concerned about when we're saying it's the state's responsibility, because I'm not sure, I'm not sure that the state is really functioning in a way that they investigate those complaints. We've heard from others that nothing, nothing happens. Do you, do you, in, in your department, have a relationship with somebody at the state that does those inspections? Or, I think I heard you say there were only three or four complaints that the state had received?
So... So, two, two different divisions of the state handle the majority of the concerns. Licensing, registration, and workplace safety, and then that's handled by the, by Dial. And then workforce development handles the misclassification. So, and answer the question about, do we have relationships? We have, we have reached out to those departments to get a better understanding of what they do, the number of complaints they receive, the number of, the number of investigations that are, that are, that are conducted.
And that's happening now, but you haven't done it in the past, so we don't know.
In the past, we have worked with Dial, like I mentioned, the, the unlicensed contractors.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we, we work with them, and we, when we come across unlicensed contractors that are doing work in town, yeah, we let them know about it.
And, and maybe I just didn't know who to report things to, but I, I know of a nonprofit that built something on Euclid Avenue in my ward, and it took them more than three years. Now, there was no money involved because they don't pay taxes, but it, this project went on for more than three years, and I know that we went a long, long time without sidewalks. I mean, there was just mud, and nobody could get through. I, I notified you multiple times, and, and you did respond. I mean, you did say, hey, we've had a conversation, we're doing that. But I also sent a couple of emails to somebody at the state, I don't know who, but, I mean, three years? Three years to have a muddy mess just seems inappropriate. It doesn't, I mean, I had a lot of complaints. Every neighborhood meeting, people would bring it up, what's going on there? I mean, does the city?
That project had union people working on that project also.
I think it was the.
I mean, it did have a.
Okay, guys, let's get back to this item that we're talking about.
I don't think so.
Okay, guys, let's stick to what we're talking about, just we can finish up.
Are we talking about, yes?
Yeah.
I've got a few more questions, if, if I may. So, you know, one of the things that you talk about is the, the state offices. Is it staff's assessment that the state offices are adequately staffed to, to provide this type of oversight?
I, I don't think that's ours to determine. We have opened up conversations with the state, and we've asked for more information, more data. But no, it, I, I can't, I can't look out and say, yeah, no, they're not adequately staffed. That's.
And, one of the things that, that you mentioned is just a general term, you know, when we talk about requirements to follow state and federal law and unemployment insurance, and making that tied to, because right now, I think there are terms in there, but there is no consequence for, for that violation, right? We say, you shall follow it, but there, there's nothing, there's no language that is tied to that today, correct?
So, let me, I will address that. We do require compliance with state, federal, and local codes. Let, let's go through a hypothetical situation.
Say there's an OSHA violation.
The project A has, has an OSHA violation. It's brought to our attention that there is an OSHA violation. We would then reach out and talk with that developer. In all of our development agreements, there, there are the opportunities to cure violations. And so then we would start that conversation about what's being done to cure this issue. Then we would enter into a discussion with, with the state, with I OSHA, to see what's being done on their end. Is, is the, is the contractor being, being responsive? Are they resolving the issue? Are they taking actions to make the job site safe? In the event that they are, okay, then the, then the system is working. Then the requirements in our, in our development agreement are adding an additional layer of, of pressure for those contractors to make sure that they are complying. Because in the event that they don't comply, in the event that they, that they, that they don't cure the, the outstanding issue, then the option is default of the agreement.
Right, so that exists today?
Yes.
Is what you're saying?
Yes.
But you're also telling me that i- if we do anything more, lenders are worried about the risk of a default like what you've just described. So how is that a lender concern if you think that that's what we're doing today?
If, if we're being asked to add language that would default an agreement that can't be cured, then lenders have a significant concern with that.
I don't think, I don't think any of the language that I have seen has ever asked to default an agreement without an opportunity for abatement or to cure a violation. I don't, I, I mean, that's not what Cedar Rapids does, that's not, I mean, I proposed this, various versions of this language, and I've never said, do something like this without an opportunity to cure. So, I, I don't, I, I mean, I, I think, I think, and this is very useful, because I think this, this lender concern then is something that has been created out of a hypothetical that doesn't actually exist. Like, we could actually, I think, solve that lender concern just with a language that allows abatement of a violation. And I don't think anyone at this table would have a problem allowing someone to cure. Now, another question that I had, because sometimes I, I think there's concern about multiple violations, and sometimes a bad actor either thinking that because the state is understaffed, they're, A, unlikely to get caught, or B, if they get caught, the fine will be $500 or $5,000, and that's just the cost of doing business and, and cutting corners because there's not any greater consequence. Have you ever asked a developer about adding language? And this would, I think, also address the concern that you have about staff being the ones to solve this. If there is such a violation, whether it be OSHA or licensure violation that results in a fine, you provide the opportunity to abate, but we incorporate the state fine into our development agreement, right? So if you get a $5,000 fine for, for first offense, for an OSHA violation, you get the same ding on, on the development agreement. You lose, you lose $5,000, so there's a consequence. That is very defined and limited. It would not require any staff work other than paying attention to what the state inspectors are doing and saying, but it would provide a consequence. And you could, I, I think that would be something that you could address in ways that that consequence could get greater if there are multiple violations, if there are repeat offenses, but it would provide a bit more accountability. Has that been, over the year and a half that this has been discussed, anything like that ever been discussed or addressed?
No, what I'm hearing is a duplication of, of state enforcement.
It's not a double fine.
It's not a duplication. It, yes, it's a, it's a fine saying, because we, we are serious about wanting state law to be followed, and if it is not followed, that's a breach of our agreement, and there's a consequence for our, our agreement, just like there's a consequence for the law violation. The law violation is a violation of our agreement, and there should be a consequence and, and cost to that.
So to answer the question, no, we, we haven't gone down that rabbit hole. I think that would be something that we would look for our legal team to do some analysis on before we, before we pursued it too, too aggressively.
Okay, if there's no other questions at this time, or you have more? Do you have more?
I mean, I, yeah, I mean, there, I, I guess I'd like to maybe, I can stop on questions, but I'd like to maybe offer some comments about how I hope that we would consider proceeding.
Well, I'm asking, I'm going to ask for the consensus of the recommendations at this point, of what the staff has recommended and utilizing what we have now.
I think there's more that can be done.
Well, we'll have the opportunity for people to have input to determine at this time, because this has been going on for a while. And is the city manager?
It's been going on for a while, but just for clarification, we've asked for this meeting like this a year and a half ago, and it's taken us this long to get here. I really, I think it's important enough that we really do need to work on some solutions as, as some things that we can do better. And following state law and putting that in a development agreement, I don't think is asking too much.
I mean, I think there's some small things that, that we've talked about, just in terms of language. And I think the concerns, at least from my perspective that we've heard, were, were based on straw man arguments or things that, that, that could be pretty easily addressed, right? I mean, the concern about lender concerns, we can address the, and provide an opportunity to abate. I've not heard anything in terms of, well, I will tell you what I think when, when the costs go up to bid, just because you have to provide a list of subcontractors or payroll. I mean, to me, that's a red flag that someone is actually engaging in practices that, that just a little bit of transparency and sunshine would catch. And so, yeah, if you're misclassifying and you think that that transparency might, might cause you to have to, have to shift your practices because you'd be caught, and just the fact that there's a little transparency would make it a little easier for, for someone to file a complaint and give that, give those state offices that, that basis. Maybe you change the practice there, and, and changing that practice leads to a cost. But I struggle to see how the administrative piece of that, when you have a payroll system, when you have a, and just providing a list of subcontractors, I fail to see how those basic requirements are going to increase costs. So I'd like to see us add that, that type of language to our development agreements. And then I think there was a piece that was missing from, from this overall discussion. Part of our goal, when we are building our community, you know, we talk about what these projects build from, from a building perspective, and what we're getting. But our goal isn't just that, that physical space, it's also building the workforce in this community and, and building up the people in this community so that they can build the next project and the project after. And that's part of what the apprenticeship piece is about and part of why that is important. And I'd like to, to see us engage on that as well. And I'm willing, you know, I think there are ways, and, and we've seen examples where there could be bonus structures, you know? Our basic development agreement, you know, you, we try and be in, under that 20-year and that 15, 15-year, 75%. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to contemplate, do we need bonus structures on, to get apprenticeship? But there are things that we can do, and I'd rather have that conversation. I think it's important that Des Moines has that conversation, and, you know, I think what Councilmember Coleman did by, by bringing some of this to MAC, that, that's important and that is valuable, but that doesn't absolve us from the need to lead here in Des Moines. And we have projects, we have projects that, I mean, no one's going to be talking about building a, a 30-story skyscraper in West Des Moines. There are certain things that are going to be built in Des Moines because we are Des Moines. And being in this environment, being in the urban environment, has benefit in and of itself. And we should take advantage of that, and we should be leading this conversation and taking it to MAC, and leading in MAC is a piece of that, but leading by example is also a piece of that. So my hope is that we do a lot more than what is in front of us from a staff perspective. I think we can. I think there are small things that we can do immediately that don't, don't increase costs and are not that complicated. And I think there's a lot more that we can do with further conversation as well.
Okay. So, in order to, the one thing I, one question I have is, how many more people? If we are the ones that are going to put all these other items in place, who monitors it, who, who does that cost shift to? Maybe not the developer, but it shifts to us, right?
Certainly, yeah. With, with each, with each additional, additional piece of monitoring, of auditing, regulating, evaluating the, the OSHA fines, that adds, that adds staff, staff, I mean, there's additional staffing resources that, that come with that. So, the more complex the, the development agreement becomes, yeah, the more time it takes to administer.
That's scary, it's on that end.
Mayor, may I make one comment?
Yes.
I, I think moving forward, council members should feel free to report to the city manager any recommendations or questions that, that can be vetted. I'd still like to hear from the union folks if they have comments, if they can submit. When we engaged in this conversation about two months ago, I asked that this be added to a workshop, so I appreciate it being hap, that it happened quickly. I'm not going to say this to puff up the person at the dais here, but in the 40 years that I practiced architecture in Des Moines, I have never worked with a more willing-to-listen department head to find solutions. So I think the timing is good. If there are solutions, we'll find solutions, and maybe there are solutions. I wasn't on the council in 2023 when this was last discussed. This was, has been very helpful to me. It's a complicated matter, and I'll just make a couple of very quick comments about bids and revealing who the bidders are. We have some developers in the audience, and when they take a bid and they put together a project, they might not have awarded all of the bids. They might have a couple of brickies that they're still considering, or they, they don't even know who the final bidders are. Now, that's probably determined by the time a development agreement is reached, but it's a complicated issue. I also don't want to assume roles that the city takes on that other bodies should be taking on. I'm very concerned about that. You look at rural Iowa, and most small communities, rural Iowa, don't have building inspectors. Things just get built. And the only time that there's any oversight is if a project requires a state fire marshal's office, and that's a hospital, a nursing home, a school. Other than that, there, things just happen. I'm very pleased generally with the quality of construction that we see in this market. But if there's anything that we can do in this market to remove the bad apples, because there have been some bad apples that produce terrible work that should be barred from doing work. And if there are mechanisms that we can apply to, to eliminate those folks, we should be doing it. But it's a complex issue, but let, let's see if there are any options. Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Councilman Simonson, and, you know, I mean, this is a complicated issue. We've been dealing with this, I've been, you know, from, you know, questionnaire that we used to have to have them fill out that was taken away from us and preempted, you know, to me having a conversation with leadership last year, almost to the day, of saying, the responsive, responsible bidder needs to be addressed at the State House. And he said, oh, yeah, we did that. It's the, you know, construction manager at risk, that's, 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 you know, if you want to see that go away, then go ahead and, go ahead and bring up your own, bring up your own stuff. So they're watching, and they're, they know. You know, I, we do need to eliminate some of those unresponsive responsible bidders ourself, because we know who they are. We know that we can, that we can not allow them to bid on things. They've screwed up enough here in this city that we know that we, we shouldn't allow them. You know, providing a list of subcontractors, you're exactly right. Some of the, some of the folks don't know that and won't release that if you go through a bid process with, with a developer. I've heard that from them, you know, until the very, very end. You know, we, us being involved in state, you know, trying to find them again or doing these things, that, that is a concern. We're, we're making cuts. We have $17 million that we need to cut, and we're talking about a few projects of adding additional staff to be able to watch people that the state is supposedly doing. I think it would be helpful to put that on our website, if you go back a few slides, that people have a better opportunity of reporting these things, but I also would like to know that. But I also would like to know is, how long does it take after you report it before OSHA gets there, before some of these things are inspected? And how is it inspected? You know, some of those questions I, I don't think are very clear, because obviously, you know, it's happening, it's happened in other cities. I don't know how much it's happened here. It would be, it would be good to know that. So, I mean, I don't know where we go from here. I've tried to get this, I've tried to get this to the finish line. I'm not sure how, how we do that. I think, I think my proposal years ago was the non-generated TIF, or additional TIF, and, and I've said that to the guys that were building that tower. What's the additional cost to do it all, all apprentice programs? What is the additional cost? Never really got a statement back from them of what it would cost, because I would have been willing to do additional, additional incentives for a gap to make sure we get a quality product, project, and make sure that we have our workforce that is here, living here, working on that project. That is one of the most concerning things for me. These are the people that I represent that need to be working in our city, not in rural Iowa where they have no rules. So, I mean, that, I, I think that's the fix. It's just depending on if we want to make that policy change and use additional tax dollars to incentivize that. And that has to be something that we'll have to come to an agreement upon.
Councilman with us.
I'll be brief. I think that there are three words in here that, that are the biggest challenge for me. Pursue regional requirements. I think that's the big challenge that we have here, so.
I think that's the opportunity. I think we're addressing it with MAC. They're coming to one of our next meetings, but I think through the city managers and the economic, bringing together like the Capitol Crossroads did, everybody together so that we have a regional concept. When I look at the percentage of what we are to the total, we're minimal. So I, we're, we can lead by bringing people together to try to couple with a complete consideration of some of these items. That's where I see our role is, more so than setting it just for Des Moines, and no one else does it. I think that we have got to consider our competition that's within the area, and we can, we can lead in different ways as far as trying to get something changed in a collective way within this region. And that's where I say I would take it at this time. I would say, stay with what we have, work regionally to get something through. I don't know what the consensus is on that. But if it is staying where it's at, and let's work regionally, we will move forward with that.
Just a, a quick point. I agree with everything you're saying. The MAC kind of commits during the legislative session they're working on.
Right.
So I just don't want anybody to believe-
No, it's-
-coming up. It's probably a May-
June, wasn't it, May?
A May or June meeting when the legislature's done that will, will take this up.
But, I mean, I think that, that's fine. I, I'd still love to see some small things, right? I mean, adding a sentence like, the developers required upon request from the city to provide a list of subcontractors at every tier of subcontracting performing work on the project. What is the objection to something like that? I, I mean, I, I heard cost, but I don't see how there's a cost to that. Like, what, that's a small piece that we could change that I don't think puts us at a competitive disadvantage that provides a little more transparency and accountability.
Well, I think if, if they, if people are stating there's a cost, we can get that information as to why, and we can bring that back if there is a cost, or not a cost, and you can determine if it is. But people that are more associated with it are the, I would say, the experts in that, determine the cost. I know our cost would be, we'd have to be having somebody monitor and get all the lists and keeping track, and did they adhere to it, right?
I mean, all, all we're asking is for them to provide a list. So, all we, from a staff perspective, all they'd need to do is, was a list of subcontractors present.
Don't you want to verify that list? I mean, you have to have somebody, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, what's the value?
I mean, somebody's got to go through it. I mean, I understand what you're saying, and there shouldn't be any additional cost, but there will be additional cost for, for our city, because that lit, to go back a few slides, we're going to have to verify that every single one of them, somebody is, whether it be the building inspector, whether it be someone on economic development. I mean, somebody's going to have to verify it. Maybe it's going to be me and you verifying.
Well, we, we spent a significant amount of the discussion at the beginning of this talking about how the complaint process, folks are free to make complaints, right? If the public has the list of subcontractors and they think something is wrong, we're facilitating the ability to effectively make a complaint. If the public doesn't even know who the subcontractors are, it is a lot harder to address things like, you know, to raise questions about whether or not someone is getting the appropriate unemployment insurance or workers' comp insurance. But if we know who the subcontractors are and folks have concerns, they have the ability to follow up in ways that they don't today. That is the purpose. It provides a little more transparency and accountability, doesn't provide any cost. I'm not asking staff to do anything beyond make that transparent and available. If there are public dollars in there, we should know who's doing the work. Why can't we do that?
It looks like there's not, we're going to go forward with this. We will bring up the concerns of the regional aspect unless somebody has something else.
Forward questions, suggestions, the city manager.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Apologies to engineering, Mayor, but I think-
Guys, can we have some time? This is the second time they've been here, right?
I can't, I can't do that anymore.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Next Monday, maybe?
Yeah. Have more, have more workshops more frequently so we can address all of our concerns.
Yeah. I mean, I, I will say, when I first started on the council, there was a period where we did work, work sessions every Monday, not every other. And rather than truncate conversation, because we, we only get so many opportunities to have a conversation, and I, I want to be able to ask questions and have a full conversation, I'd be willing to come back on an additional Mondays to, to do a few more work sessions and to get additional information.
I have my schedules pretty open in most cases, but how many, I mean, I'm just saying, the-
I'm dedicated, I'm dedicated to this job, and, you know, I, I know it's a part-time job, but I'll be, I'll be here whatever Monday you ask me to be here, Mayor. I mean, you know, I mean, I, I take this job very serious. It's a part-time job.
So, everybody, other people have to run, so I guess we will do it next month. Check your schedules.
Yes. I recommend questions and suggestions in writing so that we have something to respond to when we meet again.
Right. And- Okay. So, any other additional, send it to the city manager, and then we will have more conversation from a regional standpoint from this. And I'm, sorry, guys, and transportation gets you up and going early. We will see you, we will check schedules and confirm next Monday, and you'll be the first thing on the next time we do this. So with that, we will reconvene.
Well, maybe the only thing.
The only thing. We will reconvene at our regular time at 5:00, and we will see everyone then. Thank you.